Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Today is November 20th. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Trustee McDonough.
Present.
Trustee Maribel.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Middleton.
Present.
Trustee Engenga.
Here.
Trustee White. Trustee Kerwin.
Present.
VP Kelly.
Here.
And President Saunders.
Here.
Student trustee DeGrampy.
Here.
And we have our quorum. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled Board meeting, subject to the terms of the Board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, Board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Norman Hupman. Norman Hupman. Scarlett Lewis. Joshua Elliott. Elijah Holman. Come up to the microphone, Elijah. Put the mic on.
Hello. My name is Elijah Holman. I'm here representing the Mount Vernon Boys Track and Field Team. We here at Mount Vernon Boys, Mount Vernon Track Team, we believe that Coach Barry is a great candidate to be head coach, and I here have a list of reasons why. So, number one, Coach Barry, he has a good relationship with our team as a whole because he's been here for so many seasons. He knows the ins and outs. He knows his athletes very well. He knows how to keep us on track, what we need to work on, and you know, with him in head coach position, he can help us work on that, as you know. He knows what we need, right? And he's, I feel, he's one of the top guys to provide that to us. Another reason here is Coach Barry, he's a very organized person. I can say this with 100% certainty, because for past activities, for example, we went to Adidas Nationals right over June. During this time, his position was assistant coach, and that whole trip was planned out by him, you know, by him, by himself. With him at head coach, he can do a lot more than just, you know, planning for stuff like that, you know. Before he was even, before he was running for head coach, he had already planned a schedule out for the season, which was cut short because, you know, his time was called. In short, I feel that me and my team believe that, you know, with Coach Barry at head position, we can do a lot more. We can bring championships. We can bring rings. We can bring Mount Vernon Track to the position it was years ago. So, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Michael Green, representing Mount Vernon Track Team, particularly the Thoris. As Elijah previously said, Barry knows us very well and can present us with training ideas as well. Personal experience I've shared with Barry is the fact that he commented on my weaknesses and did not bring me down to put me to a higher level to improve me. So, after he made that comment on me, it sent me on a linear path from throwing around three feet to around 30 feet. And this is very relevant if you check my athletic net scores right now. And I feel like Barry can reach even more further with not only the field events, but with our overall as a track team. And I feel like he can make us generally better. That's my main point.
Good evening. My name is Edward Robinson, representing Boys and Track and Field Team. If you didn't know, track season started Monday, and we have no head coach. You know, we had a head coach, and he was taken away. Me and my teammates feel that was wrong, as Barry would be a great fit as head coach, because throughout my time working with Coach Barry, I have found nothing but success, and I've seen my teammates improve in their field and the sport, which is why I feel he would be a great fit for the head coach position.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Samuels. I attend the Denzel Washington School of the Arts, where I'm a vocal and band major. I'm additionally a part of the Mount Vernon Youth Peer Diversity Court, also the NCWA Regional Axol Silver Medalist for Westchester County. However, in concern to what I'm here for today, I'm a part of the Mount Vernon Track Team since the ninth grade. Over this time and under the leadership of our coaching staff, including Coach Barry, I've won many titles and awards in my events of weight throw, hammer throw, shot put, and discus. This summer, I became the 2024-15 through 16 age division youth champion, section one and class WA champion, also receiving a few interest letters and offers from Division One schools. However, this could not be possible without the great leadership of our coach, Coach Barry. We, the Track Team, is asking for Coach Barry to be our head coach. He has a personal connection with each individual athlete. A coach's position is not a position that's supposed to be taken lightly. A coach is an educator. He is a wise speaker, a brother, a father figure, and even a therapist to all the people they coach. And my coach, Coach Barry, exemplifies all this. Coach Barry has been a parent and president in the Mount Vernon Track Program since 2011, where he used to run track himself, and they won many titles as well. Coach Barry came back and gave back his wisdom, knowledge, and experience to the Mount Vernon Track Program. This program breeds and nurtures immense talent on and off the track. I currently have a 4.0 GPA invitation to sing and represent my school and my city on multiple occasions, but yet, this would not be possible without the leadership of our coach, Coach Barry. In closing, I remember growing up and always doubting myself and always feeling as if I didn't deserve to win, or I didn't deserve to get the top awards and recognitions. However, I remember before I threw at a track meet, Coach Barry took me aside and said, "Never give up on yourself and your dreams. You have potential and will achieve anything you work hard for. And if you believe in your abilities and you achieve greatness, you will always get what you deserve." He believed in us even when we didn't believe in ourselves, and that is why Coach Barry is my head coach, and he is and deserves the head coach position.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Amuzu. I'm from the STEAM Academy. I'm here to represent the Track Team. I think it's very important that, like, you know, we're four days into the season. Season began on Monday, the 16th, and it's now Wednesday, the 19th, and, sorry, three days. And like, it's not good for us to be wasting time and making this decision. This is something that should have been happened before, and it's affecting the team's performance as well, because right now, I'm sure other teams in other, in other school districts are not having this issue. Right now, they're probably on the track putting in minutes. Now, we're here arguing over who's about to be our head coach. Meanwhile, we have somebody that's been in the system since 2011, like Matt has said, and it's just something that shouldn't be happening. As a senior, I've been in this, I joined track as a sophomore, it's now three years. Barry's with me, been with me the whole, like, the whole process. I've been in his group as a sophomore. He's taken me up. Elijah and I, we went to Nationals. He's the person that brought me up to be at that, at that level. And I feel like we shouldn't be wasting time, because Barry, he knows the, he knows the system. It's affecting the fluidity of the team. You see how it's so like, I've never seen this team like this, you know? It's just like, it's just frustrating for this to happen, that we're looking around panicking when the right option is right there. So, I really feel like it's affecting our performance as well, and I really want to go into this season very strong, but, you know, this is impeding that. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Good evening to you all. I go to Mount Vernon High School. I'm a senior. My name is Ivan Iregoyan. Today, I'm representing Mount Vernon Track and Field Team, right? One of the first things that I wanted to say is just, well, upon what my teammate said, we decided that Coach Barry would be the best option. He's been working with us for years. And one of the things that wasn't previously picked up is his dedication. Even before he was offered this opportunity to become head coach, he was working with us during the summer in his off time, maybe even times when we didn't have practice, you would call Coach Barry, "Oh, Coach, I need help in this. Coach, I don't feel good." Coach Barry was always there. He's one of the few people that we can trust, you know, inside and outside the track. Also, one of the other things is that with Coach Barry, we get in and out, which is very important as a student athlete. Currently, I'm a senior, as you can, you know, college apps already started, and Coach Barry is one of the persons that helped me with applying to colleges. Early action I got to become a quest reach finalist. I got an interview with MIT recently. So, I would like to say, I would like to thank Coach Barry for that. And you know, that's just what I wanted to say. Coach Barry's been there with us for the past, for me, three years since I joined my sophomore year. He helps us athletically and academically. He makes sure that you get out of time, you know, you get out of practice at a reasonable time where you can get home, do your work, you're not exhausted. So, this gives us the ability to not only compete in the classroom, but also compete as a team, and I think this is really important to making that decision. That's why Coach Barry should be the head coach.
Good evening. Good evening, trustee members, superintendent, esteemed staff. My name is Akil Berry. I am currently the Boys Assistant Track and Field Coach. I'm not here today to represent just the Track Team. I'm here to represent the city of Mount Vernon, actually. So, some of you, some of you have been my principals, some of you have been my teachers, many of you have been my coworkers for numerous years. Today is actually a special day. It just popped up on my phone, my LinkedIn, but today is actually the first day that I've been appointed 10 years ago as a track and field coach in the city of Mount Vernon. So, I bring to the table about a decade's worth of experience, not only with the high school athletes, but I was a pivotal point in bringing back track and field to the city of Mount Vernon. As you can see in the crowd, I have about 10 years' worth of athletes, many of alums that came back. I don't only just coach athletes. So, many of my athletes, I can just speak on their success, because their success is mine. I have athletes that are electrical engineers, physical therapists, doctors, lawyers, what else? Chemical engineers. So, when it comes to just having an athlete, they're not just athletes to me. We're preparing them for the future, and as educators, that's what we want to do. It'll be great if they go to that next level of being an athlete, but everything that they've learned in their careers or their future careers started here in Mount Vernon. Additional experience that I hold is bringing back the Track Program to the city of Mount Vernon. Many of you may have seen what's called the Twilight Series that happens during the summertime here in Mount Vernon, giving our children an opportunity to compete and have something to do over the summertime. That was my brainchild three years ago, before Memorial Field reopened. When Memorial Field did reopen, I was given the opportunity to become the track and field coordinator for the city of Mount Vernon, in which, over the past two years now, we've been able to give a positive outlet for athletes to compete, and specifically, over about 3,000 athletes, not in just Mount Vernon, across Westchester, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, we have athletes that come from all over. But yes, in closing, I do believe that I am the best fit for the Track Team. I'm a USATF Level One certified coach. I'm a New York State Education professional coach certified in track and field.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, I'm up here, Keisha Robinson, to just discuss, I'm a parent, to just discuss some various thoughts and comments that I had with regards to school configuration, after-school, et cetera. So, with regards to the after-school programs, I know the high school parents inquired at the last meeting that we had. I wanted to know what is being offered at each school and where, and is anything being done in conjunction with City Hall? I know they have some programs. So, that's my first question. I then wanted to throw, with regards to school configuration, that there are pros and cons to everything. I discovered today that there's such a thing as cyber school, which is in Pennsylvania. So, I said, "Is this online or remote school?" And she told me, the parent told me, "No." She said, "Her students, her kids basically do five hours of video instruction and must log on by 11:00 p.m. to be marked present. It's not with a teacher. It's on their own." It has the advantage, they can get jobs, et cetera, after they complete their work. So, she was on her way with a job interview with her 16-year-old son. That's how this conversation came up. I said, "Why is your child not in school?" So, she said, "In her school district, they can always go back into the school when, if they choose to, when they no longer want to do cyber school. It's 400 students in the middle and high school," and they were trying to recruit her six-year-old, and they currently have five in the elementary school. I bring that up to say, with regards to the school configuration, please do not react in a knee-jerk reaction, simply because of decline in enrollment. This is happening everywhere, in New York City and almost every school district that you look at. A lot of people moved during COVID because they weren't happy, but with knee-jerk reactions, you can have what many schools did, which was they jumped to STEM or STEAM because it was the hot topic and got rid of all of the trades, and then realized later on that they had to put that back in. So, now you're dealing with decline in enrollment. What will you do with increased enrollment? The class sizes, what will they be? They're now, New York City is moving to 20 to 25. So, if you're combining schools, you're moving from whatever the class sizes are now to 30 or higher? That's something to consider. What are you doing with the schools that you close? Will you demolish them? Are they being sold or leased to anyone? Those are questions that popped into my head. When you're looking at the schools that you are closing, consolidating, or whatever, is this based on actual data of school, student-teacher performance based on ELA and math exams? How is this being done besides fiscal and financial school upkeep or deterioration? I think another thing that needs to be done is to provide to parents, what are all the current schools in the district? What are the student enrollment? And what will be done with those schools that you intend to close? What is the measure of success? Is it 60 to 80%? Or are you considering 10 to 20%? I know Denzel Washington was mentioned. That's a specialized school. Most schools that are combined with this model have separate buildings, including Success Academy. You have your sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They enter through a different entrance. They have different buildings. I also looked at the intermediate schools in New York City, and it's the same thing, that they have two different buildings. So, yes, it's the model everyone is going to, but will probably switch back at some point. So, I seriously stress that you don't do a knee-jerk reaction. As far as the town hall next week, please don't let that be a silent meeting. Not everyone has computer access, and the last time I attended one of those, everyone was muted. There was no raise your hand, no opportunity to comment. So, please don't be disrespectful and do that. It shouldn't just be a listening meeting. That should be an in-person meeting.
Nancy Baker. Cynthia Crenshaw. Sakia Brown.
Good evening. It's actually Sakai Brown. Hi, I'm Sakai Brown. I am the PTA president at Nelson Mandela Jose Zalacoffer School, and I'm also a parent of a fourth grader. I wanted to speak about the Board's Town Hall that was held a few weeks ago in regard to the reconfiguration. The community and the attendants requested the slideshow presentation be made available, and it is still not, and it still has not been distributed. We were instructed to join subcommittees, and I was able to do so for the two that were interested in me. However, a number of the parents requested to join multiple groups, and were told that all the meetings were held at the same time. Also, at the town hall, the community was made to feel like the reconfiguration was an open discussion and not set in stone. With that being said, why were parents turned away from joining the subcommittees if they were interested in lending their voices? This week, the Board emailed the date of the next town hall, but to much chagrin, the meeting invite was only in English. I want to remind the Board that my concerns were expressed at the last Board meeting, really the town hall, that any survey distribution should be in multiple languages. So, I'm asking the district to please resend out the invite and offer it in all languages that represent our district across the city. Also, why was the format changed from in-person to a Zoom platform? By having Zoom, a lot of the district families will not be able to log on. Also, a large group of the parent populations don't use English as their first language. So, I'm just asking if you take these under advisement. Thank you.
That ends public comment. I didn't get a message from you, but do you want her to? Janine Fertile. Okay. Janine Fertile.
Good evening. My name is Janine Fertile. I'm the PTSA president at the Mount Vernon STEAM Academy. I'm also the PTA Council Vice President for the Mount Vernon PTA Council. I want to say I'm very proud of the Boys Track Team for coming and speaking tonight at the Board meeting. I hope their voices were heard tonight, and they will be able to feel as if their voices matter. I would like the district, I would like to know if the district currently have a master calendar in place. Implementing one would help prevent conflicts in scheduling and overlapping, like the parent-teacher conference report card night and the town hall meeting. It is unfortunate that both events are scheduled for the same day and time, forcing parents to choose between them. Parents in Mount Vernon do care about their children and would like to be involved. Would it be possible to reschedule the town hall meeting to ensure that all parents have the opportunity to attend both? Denzel Washington School's report card night is the same night as the town hall meeting. I have a child at Denzel Washington School. I would love to be able to talk to my child's teachers when all the other parents are talking to their child's teachers. So, if the district had a master calendar, because a lot of meetings seem to conflict with things that are scheduled at the school. During the last town hall meeting, it was noted that not all families have access to the internet. Some may not even be comfortable with using technology. To make future meetings more accessible, would the district consider holding the town hall meeting in-person and offering a Zoom option? This would ensure that more parents can participate in this very important discussion.
Excuse us. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Did I get back my time? Because I know the buzzer will go off. As many parents, many parents want to submit well-informed questions for the next town hall meeting. Unfortunately, many questions from the last town hall meeting were left unanswered. There are no updates, dated documents on the school reconfiguration. Will there be updated information on the school district's reconfiguration before the next town hall meeting so that parents can ask, can be fully informed and ask well-informed Students and parents are inquiring about the lack of STEAM-related after-school clubs at the STEAM Academy. Could you provide information on whether there are plans to introduce any after-school Yeah, and it would also be nice if, when people come to the Board meetings to speak, that their questions are answered, because it's a shame that a lot of, a lot of parents are very concerned, and to wait two weeks to answer questions. And also, people fear that questions will be answered with, it has already been answered, and we have no idea what the previous answer was, and that's why the question was re-asked. So, if a question was asked and it was already answered, can you please re-answer the question so we know what the response is?
Ms. Crenshaw would like to speak. She just arrived. Is that okay with the Board?
Good evening, Cynthia Crenshaw. As everybody knows, there's all kinds of rumors going around about schools closing. But I just wanted to give you a little insight into Parker School, and I just want to read something real, really quick. Ms. Cecil H. Higgins-Parker was born on February 2nd, 1903, in Savannah, Georgia. Ms. Parker worked as an English teacher and taught adult education for the Mount Vernon Board of Education. The trustees appointed Mrs. Cecil H. Parker as the first Negro teacher to teach. Not only was she the first appointed African-American teacher in Mount Vernon City School, but in all of Westchester County. Ms. Cecil H. Parker portrait is proudly displayed in the Cecil H. Parker School entrance. Mayor Sean Patterson Howard has called upon all citizens of Mount Vernon to recognize the first Wednesday in June as Cecil H. Parker Day and to urge everyone to celebrate her life and legacy. So, Parker should be considered a historical building and founder. Rumors out in the street, and everywhere I go, really, is saying that Parker's one of the buildings that will be closed, sold, torn down, et cetera. So, I'm just putting it out there, what I'm hearing, and we just pray that this is not the case because of Parker's solid history. Another thing I would like to know, what is the capacity of each of the elementary schools? Charter schools are advertising the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Keeping in mind, a lot of parents do not want their seventh grade child in a building with seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen-year-old students. And I believe our enrollment will continue to decline if we keep, well, if we address the seven to twelve model school. Did the state ever approve, ever approve the charter schools to increase their enrollment? And was the petitions ever sent to the state? Concerning the budget, is it possible for the Mount Vernon Controller and the Treasurer of the Board to meet face-to-face with taxpayers to get a concrete answer to the budget problems and why the Mount Vernon school system is in such a bad situation? The Controller said that he wouldn't mind doing that, that he would come and speak to us along with the Treasurer. There's a lot of fingers pointing between the board and city hall over taxes. If we all work together, we can, Mount Vernon City Schools can bounce back. And when is the next in-house town hall meeting concerning the reconstruction of schools? That's it. Thank you.
That ends public comments. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to say how proud I am of the scholars for coming out tonight to advocate for a head coach. It really is so encouraging to know that you can come, be articulate, that you basically consider this important and you've decided to use this platform in order to express yourself to the board. We have so many people that's afraid to do so, but the fact that you did, what you did tonight is very commendable and I'm very proud of you. While a decision cannot be made tonight, certainly we will take what you say in consideration. It's our understanding that we're still eyeing out some kinks, so a decision will be made by the next board meeting. I'm so sorry that, um, you are without a coach and I'm, but I'm delighted that your assistant coach is stepping up until a concrete decision was made. So I ask you to bear with us. We want you to win. We want you to compete and we are hopeful that you will have the spirit in which to do so. So I want to thank you so very much for coming out. We heard you. We understand, um, your position. Please let us do what we need to do in order to render a decision. Thank you so much. I'm gonna call up, um, our Assistant Superintendent of Business. That's Jose Formoso. He's gonna speak about the budget and the reason that the reconfiguration is put on the table. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Pleasure to be here today. So really, I came in, I was asked to speak about this. A lot of it is what was, was, what was addressed at the town hall, but we're just reinforcing it from a fiscal perspective. So for this presentation, I'm really only gonna be speaking to the fiscal situation of the district and giving insight into that. Next month, we will have our fiscal advisors here who will give a more thorough presentation alongside me regarding the fiscal condition of the district. So there's major challenges that must be addressed here at Mount Vernon. Here are really the six core ones, which the first is the current and projected declining enrollment, the staffing issues and inefficiencies that have been created partially due to the declining enrollment and the current model that we have in place, the underutilized buildings, capital improvements cited on the building condition survey. I'm not gonna get into the building condition survey on this presentation, but just to give some insight, the building condition survey that was stated from 2023 shows that the current buildings of the district need about $395 million in capital repairs. Then the contracts that need to be settled. We currently have the MVFT that expired 6/30/2022, the administrator's contract that expired 6/30/2024, and the CSEA contract that is expiring in 2025, so the end of this school year. And finally, I will get into the significant fiscal distress that the district is facing. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So this graph is really just showing the enrollment. Can you, can you see it okay or no? I'll talk, I'll talk to it, so don't worry. What you're seeing is the line chart that starts over in 2013. So in 2014, we had 8,190 students in the district. Over the course of nine years, we dropped to 6,483 students by the end of 2023. This represents a loss of 19.6% or 1,577 students. With the demographic study that was done through BOSI's, which was a comprehensive study that was presented a few months ago, they cited that we are expected to continue a steady decline all the way through 2033. The anticipation is that by that time, we will be down to 5,168 students, which represents a loss of another 20% and a total of 1,315 children. So to this date, given the fact that we already lost 1,577 students in the district, we pretty much have the same structure in place, same number of buildings, but significantly less children. So here is just a timeline of the declining fiscal condition at the district. I only went back to June 2019. In December, when we do the fiscal analysis, we will go back further to give a more thorough overview. But what you'll find is that every year, except for in June of 2021, that school year, so that school year was, the school years go July to June 30th. So every year, except for the 2021 school year, we were operating at a deficit. June of 2019, 7.1 million. June of 2021 was the positive of 4.88, but June of 20 was 3.5 million almost. June of 2022, negative 4.3 million. June of 2023, loss of 3.3 million. And this current fiscal year that just ended, we were at a loss of 2.5 million. So it's been a consistent story over the last six years as to, as to what's going on. And what happens is, from a fiscal standpoint, what happens is when you have a deficit, you end up using your reserves. So at this point, because of the losses that we have taken over the years, we are almost fully out of our reserves. So there is no backup if we were to run into a deficit again. So that is why, people have asked me, why is this so important right now? It's so important right now because if we don't make a choice, this district will face ramifications that will go well into the future and it will affect our children well into the future. It is very difficult to pull out of situations like this and the longer you take to make the proper decisions, the longer it will take to rectify. Here's our uncollected school taxes. These are as of June 30, 2024. So I just want to make it clear, we collect our taxes, current taxes and prior year taxes, anything after 2020. So these numbers do change every day, but I use them off of our audited financial statements. So what this will show is that there's a total of $24.2 million outstanding as of June 30, 2024. These numbers have been going down, like that 1920 number I just checked. That's currently below $4 million now from $5 million. The city is making monthly payments. They have an arrangement to pay $450,000 a month until that balance is paid off. It's expected to be paid off by September of 2025. The other tax years that you'll see is the 2020, 21 school year and the 21, 22 school year. So the city has two years to make us whole from the time that we state and send to them the amount of uncollected taxes. So they are expected to make us whole as of May of 2025 for those two years. So school year ending 21 and school year ending 22. The 22, 23 school year, we're expected to receive roughly at some point next school year. And the 23, 24 would be two years from now if things go according to the trend. So here's, just to end this conversation, here's the measures that we've been taking to address the fiscal condition. So the first was, we hired a fiscal advisor company called Capital Market Advisors. They specialize in helping districts that are fiscally distressed, like Mount Vernon is, in helping to put together both a fiscal plan for the current year, but just as importantly, a multi-year plan so that each year we are improving on our fiscal condition. We also are working with Questar, which specializes in state aid planning to maximize the revenue that we receive from state aid. We are working with BOSI's to do an efficiency study for transportation. Right now in transportation, I just looked at the most recent routing, we're running 75 bus routes a day in these four square miles so far children. We're expected to spend $19 million this year alone in transportation. So we are looking at routing specialists that will help us to better optimize the routes and reduce that, that cost to the district. We're also doing a facility study that's being done in conjunction with BOSI's. Really, the reason for that is to get all the data that we can, but to best use the facilities that we have here at Mount Vernon. So we maximize the resources that we have for the students in this district. Have a more thorough presentation alongside me regarding the fiscal condition of the district. So there's major challenges that must be addressed here at Mount Vernon. Here are really the six core ones, which the first is the current and projected declining enrollment, the staffing issues and inefficiencies that have been created partially due to the declining enrollment and the current model that we have in place, the underutilized buildings, capital improvements cited on the building condition survey. I'm not gonna get into the building condition survey on this presentation, but just to give some insight, the building condition survey that was stated from 2023 shows that the current buildings of the district need about $395 million in capital repairs. Then the contracts that need to be settled. We currently have the MVFT that expired 6/30/2022, the administrator's contract that expired 6/30/2024, and the CSEA contract that is expiring in 2025, so the end of this school year. And finally, I will get into the significant fiscal distress that the district is facing. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So this graph is really just showing the enrollment. Can you, can you see it okay or no? I'll talk, I'll talk to it, so don't worry. What you're seeing is the line chart that starts over in 2013. So in 2014, we had 8,190 students in the district. Over the course of nine years, we dropped to 6,483 students by the end of 2023. This represents a loss of 19.6% or 1,577 students. With the demographic study that was done through BOSI's, which was a comprehensive study that was presented a few months ago, they cited that we are expected to continue a steady decline all the way through 2033. The anticipation is that by that time, we will be down to 5,168 students, which represents a loss of another 20% and a total of 1,315 children. So to this date, given the fact that we already lost 1,577 students in the district, we pretty much have the same structure in place, same number of buildings, but significantly less children. So here is just a timeline of the declining fiscal condition at the district. I only went back to June 2019. In December, when we do the fiscal analysis, we will go back further to give a more thorough overview. But what you'll find is that every year, except for in June of 2021, that school year, so that school year was, the school years go July to June 30th. So every year, except for the 2021 school year, we were operating at a deficit. June of 2019, 7.1 million. June of 2021 was the positive of 4.88, but June of 20 was 3.5 million almost. June of 2022, negative 4.3 million. June of 2023, loss of 3.3 million. And this current fiscal year that just ended, we were at a loss of 2.5 million. So it's been a consistent story over the last six years as to, as to what's going on. And what happens is, from a fiscal standpoint, what happens is when you have a deficit, you end up using your reserves. So at this point, because of the losses that we have taken over the years, we are almost fully out of our reserves. So there is no backup if we were to run into a deficit again. So that is why, people have asked me, why is this so important right now? It's so important right now because if we don't make a choice, this district will face ramifications that will go well into the future and it will affect our children well into the future. It is very difficult to pull out of situations like this and the longer you take to make the proper decisions, the longer it will take to rectify. Here's our uncollected school taxes. These are as of June 30, 2024. So I just want to make it clear, we collect our taxes, current taxes and prior year taxes, anything after 2020. So these numbers do change every day, but I use them off of our audited financial statements. So what this will show is that there's a total of $24.2 million outstanding as of June 30, 2024. These numbers have been going down, like that 1920 number I just checked. That's currently below $4 million now from $5 million. The city is making monthly payments. They have an arrangement to pay $450,000 a month until that balance is paid off. It's expected to be paid off by September of 2025. The other tax years that you'll see is the 2020, 21 school year and the 21, 22 school year. So the city has two years to make us whole from the time that we state and send to them the amount of uncollected taxes. So they are expected to make us whole as of May of 2025 for those two years. So school year ending 21 and school year ending 22. The 22, 23 school year, we're expected to receive roughly at some point next school year. And the 23, 24 would be two years from now if things go according to the trend. So here's, just to, just to end this conversation, here's the measures that we've been taking to address the fiscal condition. So the first was, we hired a fiscal advisor company called Capital Market Advisors. They specialize in helping districts that are fiscally distressed, like Mount Vernon is, in helping to put together both a fiscal plan for the current year, but just as importantly, a multi-year plan so that each year we are improving on our fiscal condition. We also are working with Questar, which specializes in state aid planning to maximize the revenue that we receive from state aid. We are working with BOSI's to do an efficiency study for transportation. Right now in transportation, I just looked at the most recent routing, we're running 75 bus routes a day in these four square miles so far children. We're expected to spend $19 million this year alone in transportation. So we are looking at routing specialists that will help us to better optimize the routes and reduce that, that cost to the district. We're also doing a facility study that's being done in conjunction with BOSI's. Really, the reason for that is to get all the data that we can, but to best use the facilities that we have here at Mount Vernon. So we maximize the resources that we have for the students in this district. As of November 15, 2024, we also enacted a district-wide budget freeze to curtail the expenditures, because we are in a, in a state of deficit for this school year as well. So we're doing the best we can to reduce the expenses, to continue to low. So we're doing the best we can to reduce the expenses, continue to look at ways to offset revenue so that we could end the year, hopefully not at a deficit, but this is something that is being monitored on literally a daily basis. And we will continue to take whatever steps that are necessary to right the ship of this school district. Last slide was any questions? Did you want me to take any questions here or no? Okay. Did you want me to take any question? I should have asked this before, but.
Is it okay if he takes questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Formoso, for this presentation. It's it's very helpful and it clears up a lot of questions that are out. We started collecting our own taxes in 2020, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So in every year, we have to certify shortfall tax collection. In other words, any uncollected taxes, we have to certify to the city timely, and then they have a two-year window to pay us, correct?
That that is correct. I mean, once we certify any any, let me just put a caveat on there, once we certify it and send it to the controller, any taxes that they collect for that year, they send to us. So this is currently happening. Like, we are collaborating with the city as they collect taxes on a monthly basis, they send us a payment and they send us all the backup of the taxes that were paid with the properties, and then we enter that into our system, which is called InfoTax.
Okay. And when is the 23, 24 uncollected taxes to be certified or have we done that already?
That that was already certified.
That's amazing. That's good to know. And I think the last thing is a two-part. Do we have the ability to enforce unpaid taxes to be paid? We don't have the ability to do that, right? Only the city is as a municipality has the ability to do that, right?
Only, I mean, I spoke to attorney, only the city has that ability.
So.
I mean, as far as, this is what I was told by our attorney.
Right. So when the city says, and I think we already know the direction we're going, we're being paid monthly payments according to the 11-point whatever that was owed for, I believe it was for prior years to 2020, and they've been making any other payments that have been coming in as well? What happens? You there were three different amounts, three different amounts that were supposed to be paid by May 2025.
And I am, I spoke to Dr. Morton last week, and we are going to have a meeting where we go over what are the what are the possibilities, but that has not been set yet because I still needed to speak to some other members here. But they are aware, we talked about the May 2025 date, we talked about, does it look likely that that's going to happen? We've had, we've had a number of conversations regarding that. I think the challenge is always if you plan for something and then you don't receive it, if you were aggressive, you could put yourself in a very bad situation, and that's where we don't want to be right now.
Any other questions, trustees?
Sure.
This is more dealing with the reorganization, and you mentioned something about transportation and the number that's reflected there. And you use the word optimize the routes. And I just want you to, can you explain that more? Because when you talk about optimizing, you mean sometime the things that we used to do, we're not going to be able to do anymore? And what does that mean?
Yeah. So when when I talk to optimization, it's really in consideration of like efficiently running the route. So right now, just to clarify, the transportation company that we use, they plan the routes for the district. So we give them all the information, the location, everything like that, and they take care of the route planning. At the beginning of this year, we went into contract with a company called TransFinder so that we could bring the routing in-house, and they have optimization tools to make sure that we are properly routing the students in an efficient manner. Because what could happen is there could be different routes that could be taken that could reduce the overall number of routes. Because the way it works in terms of transportation costs is we pay per route. So the more routes we do, the the higher the number. Like, for example, we pay roughly $600 a route. I think it's about 623. If you multiply that out, I just said we did 75 routes, you could you could calculate what we're spending per school day on that. So really, it's trying to make sure that we're efficiently operating the transportation, that the routes are running the best way possible, using the tools that exist. TransFinder was considered one of the better routing softwares in the state, so that's why we went with them. And then we're going to be, the truth is, we're looking at every possible thing. We understand the dire situation the district's in, and there's not one area we're not going to look at. We started with these main categories because they're some of the main drivers of our expenses, they're the main drivers of our revenue. But we are not going, no stone will be left unturned. We're going to do everything it takes to make things better.
Thank you. Is that it? All right. Thank you, Jose.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
That's it? That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. That ends the superintendent report.
Okay. We're going to go on to committee reports.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with trustee Liz.
Can you hear me out?
I can hear you, yeah.
So one of the first couple board meetings, I talked about how I wanted to tackle the food portions at schools. So I'm thinking back on one of the meetings last week, I am going to create a survey and send it out to different schools. That way, students can talk about like how many times they get a second portion, are they hungry after, what was on their plate that day? Does it match up with the school calendar that parents are sent home? And at the bottom, they also have the opportunity to email, send any other concerns that they have. And additionally, following up from an email from Dr. Pierce from Mount Vernon High School, she noticed that the students are often very late to school or miss first period because the buses are late. And I have friends personally who travel from over where Mount Vernon High School is, and they talk about how they will wait for the bus and it will be 20, 30, 40 minutes late sometimes, so they're not there until like 8:30 or 9 o'clock at school, which isn't a problem anymore since they're seniors. But last year, when we would have APs in the morning, our majors and all these classes that we need to be there for, it would often pose often pose as a problem.
And oftentimes, sometimes if the bus is credit, they'll just pass to students. I've heard that, right?
Yeah.
All right, so maybe we need to talk about that. Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Kirwin, Audit Committee?
I don't have any update on the Audit Committee because we haven't met from the last time that I reported.
Okay, thank you. Budget Finance?
Budget, yes.
I have a question on the, I know it's not, I know we didn't have a report from the Audit Committee, but I just wanted to say that I had just recently finished my fiscal training, and during that training process, I noticed that when we did the the audit, when the audit is presented, that there were some findings from the extracurricular activities accounts. One of the recommendations was that there be an annual training for the extracurricular activities treasurers, and I wanted to know whether or not that occurs.
That will be, it has not. So that would be something that we implemented in the district. Dr. Smith and.
Do I need a microphone?
Yeah.
I just want to clarify that Mark gave me a hard time about the microphone, but it's okay. So we did, Amy from Management Advisory Group, she does these type of trainings. It's something that we know we needed, we saw it cited, so she will be holding one. We decided that it would be best, since she is remote, to do it in Zoom, but record it so that way treasurers could go back and look at it at any time, and then we'll start a knowledge base for those individuals. So we'll start to put everything in a shared drive, so that way, when new treasurers come onboard, it's easy for them to onboard. But we will be doing annual trainings going forward, starting with this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Kirwin?
So I want to thank Mr. Ferosa, Formosa, to give us the budget presentation. I also wanted to just clarify or put it out there that the city and the school district do have a working relationship. We communicate with Dr. Morton regularly, even myself. And and so to hear that the city or to hear tonight that Mr. Morton says that he will be willing to speak with us is is as if we don't speak, but we do speak regularly. So I just want to put that out there. He's very willing to anything we ask him, he is urgently responds to our requests that we ask for, him and his staff. We do speak to him, we even meet with him regularly. So I just want to put it out there and clarify that. If anyone thinks that we're not speaking to the city, we are speaking to the city. Now.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So also, I wanted to speak about the the payment that the city is making. Now, if everyone remembered, the city was behind $11.7 million, and the city was sued by the school district to pay that money back in 2020. Now, again, we met with the city, we met with the controller, the attorney, some city council, when we say we, the Budget Committee, the Superintendent, and Ingleman and Smith, we met with the city. And at out of that meeting, we came up with an agreement for the city to pay the school district, because the city said that they did not have the $11.7 million to make the school district whole. Now, bear in mind, if we did receive that $11.7 million from the city, the school district would be in better financial situation as than what we are in right now if they had made us whole. However, after meeting with them, they said that they do not have that money. So we came to an agreement that they will pay $350,000 monthly on the $11.7 million. Being that it it grew interest, interest was $2 million, the city also came back to us and said, we asked for the $2 million upfront. Again, the city said they did not have the $2 million. So we came back and we make an agreement, the attorneys and the school district made an agreement that the city will pay an additional $100,000 on the $2 million. So to date, they started the payment back in September of last year. And to date, they do make the the $450,000 monthly that that they agreed on. And currently, they owe from the balance of the 7 million, they owe from, I'm sorry, $11.7 million, they owe $2.9, $2.9 million. Now, again, we are working very closely with the city. I know the question was asked, what would happen if the city does not make us whole come next year for the $5 million? Now, in all municipalities, their city has to make them whole. And so we are hoping that the city would make us whole so we could be in a better financial situation again with the 5.9 that was certified. And then at the end of that, there will be a balloon payment from the $11.7 million. And we've been talking to Dr. Morton, and they are working on strategies of ways to come up to make the school district whole. So I just want to say that we do have a working relationship with the city, and they are working on, you know, do right by the school district. Thank you. That's that end my budget.
Can I ask a question? So it sounds as if we are not made whole because of the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
Or are there other things that are in the loop to that contributes to us being in the hole? How much are we in the hole? Aside?
Well, we we in the hole, you're talking about, we're talking about taxes. We're talking about taxes, the longer strictly taxes, the 11.7 that the city was supposed to make us whole back in 2020, that day, 2018, 2019.
So just in terms of taxes, it's all about the city?
Correct. Yes.
I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, being new to the board. It appears, based on the presentations and based on the conversations that we've been having over the past couple of months, that in 2015, we noted that there was going to be a declining enrollment, based on the information that we saw tonight, right? From 2013, it started to decline. We also know that that it's not necessarily fiscally responsible to have a 0% tax levy. It's also because we we have been relying on our fund balance and our reserves for a long period of time. And so because we have been relying on this fund balance, it is, and I and again, I just said I just finished my fiscal training, so in this training, some of the conversation was that we should never rely on our fund balance in order to balance our budget. And I do recall that last year or the year before, that there was, I know we keep talking about past school business administrators and whoever and and the blame game, but I need to say that we also, we, because I'm part of this board, that we shared with the city that we knew and understood that we were dipping into our fund balance and our reserves in order to balance this budget. There was also a conversation with our superintendent and our school business administrator where it was explained that we knew we were doing, we were dipping into our fund balance, and that's how we were balancing the budget, and that's how we were able to transfer over a 0% tax increase to our constituents. So because this has been occurring year after year after year after year, that is why we now find ourselves in a position where we cannot afford to ignore the fact that we have made decisions that have impacted us over the long term, and we are now, the chickens are now coming home to roost, and we are now in a position where we now find ourselves where we may be, where we may have to reduce staff, we may have to close schools, we may have to cut into programs and resources for our children. And it is very concerning to me, as I'm a retired school educator administrator that worked in this city, that taught some of these children, taught some of their parents, and it is very concerning, and I just hope that we are now understanding what the ramifications are of our decisions and that we are learning from our, learning from our decisions and that we are now looking at long-range planning. I am grateful and looking forward to, I appreciate our new school business administrator, who to me has brought a new life, to share with us, so we totally understand what it is that we need to do. But I think that we need to to stop blaming whoever it was, they were decisions that we made, we need to own those decisions, we need to move forward and figure out how to fix it.
So I have a question, I have a follow-up question with that, or perhaps a statement. Now, you said that with the zero tax levy that was not incorporated into the to the school district and we were using our fund balance. Now, do you think if the city had made us whole of the $11.7 million, would we be using the fund balance? So is it the residents that voted against the tax levy, are they to blame? Or is the city to blame, partially to blame, to make the school district whole, but that because they are responsible to make the city, to make the school district whole? So you're pushing, you're shifting the blame to the school districts for using what they have, but then you're taking the blame away from the city to make the the school district whole, because they are responsible to make the school district whole, regardless if they collect the taxes or not?
We are operating with a $271 million budget. $11 million in the scheme of a $271 million budget is not as significant to say that we can, that the city, not saying that the city does not owe us the money, but it is not the cities, it is not the cities' responsibility why we are sitting in the position that we are sitting. It is the decisions that the Board of Education has made over the past several years that has found us in the position that we are. has found us in the position that we are in. And that's why I say we have to stop playing this blame game because we did not necessar- and what happens is, what's going to happen is if we, if the city, if we, if, if we as the, the school board, when we present our budget in May and the citizens have lost faith in us and they decide not to vote for that, for the, for the, for the budget, then we will be left with a zero percent tax levy and we will be in more dire straits and more serious fiscal distress than we are already in because we cannot raise it more than we have raised it in the previous year. And if we started at zero, we can't move anywhere else. So what I, what I want us to understand is that we as fiduciary, fiduciary trustees of this city, that we need to make sure that we know and understand the, the ramifications of a tax levy of a zero percent increase in tax dollars for our, our community. We need to understand that and we need to stop blaming the city for not making us whole because they are making us whole as they need to. But what happens, what happens is we cannot sit here and, and, and shift the blame from, and I did not blame the citizens of the city because I do not blame the citizens at all because they are entrusting us to do our due diligence to make sure that we provide them with the information that they need in order to make an intelligent decision. What I am saying is that we as a board have to own it and we need to move forward and figure out how to fix it and stop blaming any and everybody else for it.
Trustee Maribel, I'd like to respond to that. I think you do have a responsible school board. I think that there are things, I don't think we're doing a pointing of the fingers because if that was the case, we wouldn't be going, moving forward. We are trying to come to consensus with the city. That's only part of the story. It's also the expenses. When you have an emergency in the school system, as we had at Graham, and we're told it's going to cost us two hundred thousand dollars and it ends up costing us over eight hundred thousand dollars, that's something you can't foresee. So I think all of us are taking our responsibilities very seriously. It's not just about the portion that the, the taxes, right, plays in this formula. It's also a number of other variables that we are trying to really conscientiously manage. And I don't think anybody sits here and takes this lightly, what we're doing. So I just want to bring us back to the fact that we are all working together. And I think that's important to understand. It's not pointing fingers. It is not pointing fingers. It is, you have to educate the community about what is going on. It is not, because if it was just pointing fingers, nobody would be trying to work together. We are trying to come to consensus.
While I agree, I do agree with you that when we have emergency situations in our school districts, that is what the fund balance and the reserves were, are for, not to balance our budget at the end of the school year.
And that's a responsibility of our business.
Superintendent.
Right?
That's a responsibility of the school board.
As superintendent, we do not run the day to day.
Into the operation.
I, I just want to be clear about what our, our, our position is, right? We, we do policies and procedures. Things are presented to us. If things are presented to us and they are not accurate, we can only go on.
We can, I can agree with that.
We've, we spent in the last couple of years, a lot of money to get it right, to, to bring in people with expertise to say what was wrong because it was noticed there was some deficits in the budget. And no, we didn't, we had a lot of fund transfers and the, the trustees have asked, like, why do we keep doing these transfers? Why are we, that's not our responsibility. We can approve it, but usually when we approve those transfers, we're approving it because for purpose. So it's, we need services in the district.
And I know you're approving it based on the information that you have been given and provided. I understand that. And all I'm saying is, we need to be, we need to be more knowledgeable of what that looks like and why and, and ask, maybe ask better questions.
And, and I think that you're right about that, right? But it's a, it's a learning curve. As you say, you're new to the board.
I agree.
There's a historical background that some of us do not have, right? And we are trying to learn as we go, right? NISBA provides a lot of training, but sometime it's not enough. There are things that have been done wrong in the past. People have brought it to the attention of the district and we're trying to correct it. So I, I just want to be on a hopeful note that we're all working together. It's not about calling people out, it's about working together because we need to work together. Because if you think that it's a zero percent increase for the taxpayers, wait till you see what's coming.
Eleven point seven would have helped us, but it just still wasn't.
It, it would have helped us, yes. And it also.
It just helped, but that's the point.
It, it would have helped us, but remember, our, who, who's not paying the taxes is our constituents in the district. People are struggling. And I'm telling you, we relied a lot on aid.
Yeah.
Federal money, grants coming into our district. I'm just saying, we have to be more responsible. Nobody's coming to save us. We got to save ourselves.
Understood.
And, and, and if, if we get the lump sum, it would also have us in a better situation with our fund balance. Just wanted to say that as well, just to end that note.
Well, there's more to it than meets the eye because there's so many things we didn't have to do that we did. And I won't even say it to state it, but there are things that we did and allowed that we didn't have to do, but we did financially. That also you could say is a little bit of misappropriation of funds or either we put money where we wanted to put it that didn't have to go. And, you know, then you still see it coming sometimes and you kind of wonder, well, we're in a freeze, why are we still doing?
I know it took a lot of, of the time, but that's, that really ends my budget.
Thank you, Trustee Maribel. That was the budget committee, claims committee. I have no report, education committee.
I didn't meet with the education committee, but Dr. Doggett has some information he wants to share with us.
Thank you, Dr. Doggett.
Just a couple, just a couple of updates from the education committee meeting we had on October 24th. I'm just going to give a few highlights because some of it's going to be in a presentation that's going to be given at the board next week. Mary Beth Rose, who's our ELA director, she gave updates on the K to eight, nine to twelve ELA committees. She talked about the updating the rubrics and the research-based writing for grades nine to twelve. Satish, Dr. Jagnandan, he presented targeted support instruction for our after-school program. Each school looked at their weaknesses from New York State assessments. They put a plan in place and they're going to work on those skills, grade level and below grade level, which is a prerequisite for those skills for the after-school program and during this small group instruction period. I've also talked about the evaluation procedures for administrators. This was new. This was, went through the board in March. There would, there'd been no procedures to evaluate principals, assistant principals, evaluators. Now we have standard operating procedures for all principals, directors, departments, and assistant principals. I can share that with the board as needed. And also, our Saturday greenhouse program has, will be starting this Saturday. And this program is for high school students to engage with nature, to learn more about plants, science, sustainability and horticulture in a hands-on environment. The instructor will be Carl Caprio. His contract went before the board in April. We put the curriculum together. It's going to be hands-on learning and it will start this Saturday.
So I want to say that they actually started last Saturday. They didn't expect students to come. There were three students from Mount Vernon that showed up and they've started the work. So that is.
Yes, we, that's good because we actually thought about pushing it back to the 23rd because we didn't have anybody registered. So we did another push, so it must have came back.
Mrs. Carpus at the high school was very instrumental in getting students. She has a science club there. So we'll be working with the Mount Vernon community in the district. So I'm hoping the, under the elementary school principals will join in at some point. We got to figure out how to, you know, coordinate it.
Okay. And the next education committee meeting should be next Monday, the 25th at four thirty.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Doggett.
Thank you. And that ends your education.
That would end the education committee report.
Thank you. Facilities, trustee White?
As you know, we had a problem at Pennington. This last past week, they had a flood on the second and, and first and second floor. It seems to be fixed. I know trustee Mitchell went over there, so he'll finish the report, but it looks good.
Thank you. Yeah, I was given the opportunity to take a walk over to Pennington. I, I just really, really give a big shout out because it was a, it was a village effort from my understanding. It wasn't just the Pennington in-house crew that did the cleanup. And, and when I say that there was water from the second floor to ankle deep down to the first floor from one pipe in the gymnasium in the bathroom. You had water, water that was in rooms down on the first floor and in the hallways. That happened, I believe it was either, was it Tuesday or Wednesday? Either way, no, was, was it Wednesday? I think it was Wednesday or Thursday. Can't remember exactly, but all I'm telling you, when I walked in there Friday, you would have never known that it happened, okay? So they had the, the humidifiers in there. We had custodians from other buildings that came. It was like a five alarm fire. Everybody came through. I, I give a huge salute to the Pennington cleaning crew, the custodians over there, of course, Dr. White, who, you know, led that whole initiative. It was just to walk in and see it the way it was, the rooms barely showed any sign that there was anything, a- and I'm talking even the rooms that were in the worst, the worst impacted condition, they still looked amazing, like it just didn't happen. There was no smell, there was no, you, you just didn't, wouldn't know. So big shout out to Mr. Remundy, who leads the facilities mission, Mike Regusa, the rest of the team. But it was all done in-house. I want to say again, we always throw in-house out there so that, you know, we let the people know we're still trying to cut costs as much as possible, but still keep the job done and have it high quality. So again, just a big shout out to Pennington team and everybody across the district, cleaning wise, the cleaners and custodians, our facilities folks that came through and just, it was all hands-on deck. It was a beautiful thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Family and community engagement? Nothing from?
We have had meetings that were canceled to be rescheduled.
So you have nothing. HR, trustee White?
No, we haven't had one yet. Next meeting is 12:12, December 12th.
Okay, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Campbell to explain the process for hiring substitute teachers, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so the, to hire for substitutes is the same as for any position. So they would go to town ed and put in the application. And so we usually, when we're doing for subs, we usually do it in bulk. So we wait till we have a number of applicants and then we would do, most times we would do like a Zoom interview. And then once we would vet the candidates, we'd call them in to fill out the, to continue the application process.
So you wait till you have like five, 10 or something like that?
Correct.
Before you, before you interview all of them at one time?
Correct.
Do they go through the fingerprint process and?
Yes, so they would go through, anybody that is going to be in front of our students would have to go through the fingerprint process.
Can I ask a question? Are you maxed out with subs that you don't need anymore? Yeah, you couldn't hear me?
I just want everybody else to hear.
Are you maxed out? Thank you. Are you maxed out with subs that we don't need subs anymore?
No, so we are, because we're in a budget freeze, so we're basically going through every school building, looking at what we have, what we need. And then if there is a need for more subs, then we would open it back up. But at this.
Okay, and I only say that because I know a couple of meetings.
To go, trustee White, you were like, we need subs, you know, we really need them bad. And then people apply and come back with, oh, they said they don't need no subs. They got enough subs. And, you know, going through the process, you know, is like, for what?
I don't think that was ever said that we don't need subs, mainly I was looking for.
No, I didn't say, you said that. I just said, you said we needed subs. So I'm trying to find out why we don't now because few people have said that it's been told to them that you don't need any subs.
Well, just by what he just said.
No, I'm just telling you what was said.
Said that he waits until he gets a few more together, not just one at a time. So, which I didn't know that, that you waited for a group. But yes, and we still need nurses, we still need lunch monitors, we still need assistant, whatever. We, we do need, we need people, but it's on the freeze now, so.
Part, so part of it is that we're on a budget freeze. So we're not, we're, we're taking our time, we're going through. It's the same thing with, with teachers. We're making sure if there, there are certain positions that we need, especially.
Okay, so were we not on the freeze when the people who are on the tabs for subs now, was that, was that after the fact?
So there's a process when we interview anybody. So if there are people on the tab that are now, we didn't meet with them two days ago. They were probably met two or three weeks ago. There's a certain timeframe that, for anybody that is interviewed. So if someone applied yesterday or the freeze was when, was that November 15th? Someone applied on the 12th, they probably didn't get a call because it was during that timeframe. If somebody was in, so maybe we, like I said, there's a, we wait and there's a group of people that we interview at one time. And so we are going through every school building to ensure what we have, so we're not just hiring a bunch of extra people that we can't afford at this time.
Question. So help me understand, am I asking Dr. Smith? Dr. Smith, help me understand substitutes are only used on an as-needed basis, correct? That's the expectation. Okay, so when we certify subs, is basically just creating a pool of individuals that we can tap into in case we need them? We're not actually paying them unless we actually use them, right?
That's correct.
So technically, the budget freeze wouldn't impact, or I'm asking, how does the budget freeze impact us certifying subs or creating a pool of subs or individuals that would be available to us? I don't understand why there's a challenge here.
So I don't, I don't understand either, but like I, I was saying, we are, we have a, a group of people that we're, we take our time and that we go through. So right now, there is nobody that we are looking to hire at this current moment as we're going through the process of looking at every other building in terms of what we need and vacancies we have and things of that nature. So we, it could be something that we call everybody that applied in the past two weeks, maybe in a week or two, but not at this current moment.
I'm confused, I'm confused. Because if the pool of subs are only utilized when we need them, it shouldn't matter if there's a thousand people in the sub pool or 50 people in the sub pool. It's a pool of people that we utilize as we need them. We only pay them when we need them. So I don't understand why we're not generating a pool of individuals because if you generate a pool of individuals, you may find better subs. And I'm having a little experience in this, right? You may be able to identify a person that you feel is a good fit for your building and you may want to be able to say, you know what, person comes in and they do an excellent job as a substitute. There are different grades of substitutes. There are some people that just come in and they sit there and they babysit. There are some people that come in and they actually do something, they actually provide instruction to the students. There are some people that go above and beyond who may put their, you know, their, their self into it. So I'm confused as to why we not, we would not create as many individuals as possible in order to be able to tap into as many resources as possible so that our children, especially since we have, we're, we're lacking teachers, I, I think we still have vacancies, where we may be utilizing subs for some of those vacancies, that we're not trying to use and identify the best candidates for those positions. So I'm just slightly confused as to why we would not keep generating this pool of individuals.
I'll answer that. First of all, he didn't say he wasn't generating, but he also said that it was taken a look at what currently exists in the building. It could very well be that right now, buildings are satisfied with the pool that they have and that's working. But he did say that in a couple, like some people, they'll apply for a job today and expect to be interviewed tomorrow. If in fact, he didn't say that it stopped. What he's saying basically is that for right now, next two weeks, they'll, they'll call another group in. That's what he's saying. We, he's, it's not a daily thing that's done.
I apologize, but that's not what I heard him say. I heard him say that they were based, due to. I heard him say that they were based due to the budget freeze. So when I hear the, due to the budget freeze, they were slowing down the efforts of hiring subs, that, if there's a process where there's a lag of time and there's a window of time where they have to interview and have to process, that's one thing. But to slow down the process because there's a budget, budget freeze makes, does not make any sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just to maybe get a little wonky here on this, on this topic. I'd be interested to know if a larger sub pool leads to greater sub costs, right? That, that could be the case, right? If you, if you have four hundred subs, you're more likely somehow to end up using more subs. So th- this is something that's an empirical question that we should be able to find out, so anyway.
I'm glad that you bring, brought that up, because in some instances, people want to hire subs every day just to be on hand if they need someone. And they have to pay for those people regardless to whether they actually really needed them or not.
Isn't that the responsibility of our superintendent to manage the day-to-day operations to ensure that does not occur?
When the superintendent becomes aware of those things, the superintendent does address it. But at this particular point, that's why we go out and we check, we see what's there and we want to make sure that we don't, we don't overspend an area that's not necessary.
I just, and, and I don't want to beat a dead horse. I just hope that we are making sure that our principals know and understand what the expectations are and that's funneled down to the individuals that were actually hiring the subs, so we don't run into this.
Okay, so let's go on to the IDA committee.
All right, I'm sorry to.
Okay, we have a hiccup here. Okay, okay.
In our meetings with principals, we, we express our expectations and we basically say that we don't want to over, not just over utilize subs, but also many principals use our TAs as subs. So that's a whole nother situation. So we have all those TAs being utilized. And, and, and that is problematic, because you know, TAs are not hired for that purpose. So we have conversations, we don't want our TAs to be pulled from students, but they use tho- those individuals as subs because it's within their contract. Their contract pays them seventy-five dollars a day additional to do, to be a sub. And they, for the life of me, why wouldn't they want to do that? If they're going to be, receive their salary plus that seventy-five dollars?
Again, it is my hope that the day-to-day operations are being managed, um, that we inspect what we expect. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Uh, IDA, Chris, I thought you have a report, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I do have a report. Um, sorry to have to give the report. We've had a lot of financial information tonight, we've got a little bit more. Um, the IDA met on November twentieth. The pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes agreement with one fifteen South McQueston has been granted. Unbeknownst to Controller Morton and I, uh, we found out at the meeting, had it been granted. A little bit surprised, just kind of go back and watch the meeting, it was a little bit of an interesting meeting. I'm not going to go into too many details about the actual building, it's three hundred and fifteen units. Average uh income is about sixty percent of AMI. Sixty percent of AMI for a family of four is about ninety-three thousand dollars a year. The developer estimates, estimates about forty-eight public school uh students will enter the district. Without the pilot, um, in other words, if the developer had to pay all of their property taxes in full, they would pay over the life of this pilot about eighteen and a half million dollars in school taxes. Instead, over the life of the project, they will pay eight point six million dollars, so less than half. This translates to a net fiscal shortfall to educate these new estimated students around four point six million dollars over the life of the project. These are in present dollars. All of this is available in the economic impact analysis, that's on page ten. This tax break remains in place until December thirty-first, twenty fifty-eight. So an entire generation of our kids will be born, they will grow up, become adults, and start having their own children while this developer still is getting a tax break on, on this. How that happens, y- you know, someone would need to explain that to me. So that's one fifteen South McQueston. There are some issues outstanding with that, so we'll, we'll see what happens with it. Um, Q West also came up. Q West is another uh thirty-year pilot that the IDA is considering granting. This is a little bit smaller, it's two hundred and twenty-eight rental units. It's in the same area of the city on McQueston Parkway. And it's, the terms are roughly the same in terms of the, the income mix of the building. These are, by the way, both of these projects are largely financed through federal low-income housing taxes. Um, about forty percent of, of the funding comes from, from that. This, this project um will um forego, they're, they're estimating thirty-five students in the building. Um, the forgone taxes to the school districts over the, over the thirty-year uh project would be about four point eight million dollars. The net shortfall to uh educate the new projected students is about two point seven million dollars. And again, you can find it on, on page ten of the uh economic impact analysis, the stories report. The developer in QS just today came, actually they mentioned it a few weeks ago, but they just came back to my attention again today, that they, they've offered a one-time payment to the school district of a million dollars. Um, so that would reduce the loss from two point seven to one point seven. I just want to point out something about that, just, we've all been in sales transactions. If you're negotiating and all of a sudden it comes back with a deep discount, it makes me wonder, well, how much lower can you go, right? I mean, if all of a sudden you can just say, we'll give you a million dollars, that tells me you could have done that a long time ago. Yeah, anyway, so there are two other projects, uh Sentinel on Third. Um, and I believe Grace is coming with another project, they have one already. So that, that's, that's my report on the, on the IDA.
Yeah. I have one question. Um, when you, the amount of students that these developers are stating are supposed to come into the district, we, you've mentioned it in the past, and this, not just at the last, in the past, the schematic that they're using to calculate these numbers is flawed. There's something about it that is totally giving us incorrect, inaccurate estimates for how many students. Three hundred and fifteen units in a building, only turning out forty-eight students is a farce.
Yeah, that's, so, I, I've relied on the letter that our lawyer sent to the IDA for these projects. And in that letter, our attorney out, did an actual head count. We did an enrollment count of projects, existing projects. And, and if you use that information, you come up with a much higher number. Now, um, there's, there's some debate about, about, about this. Um, which bill, for example, we found kids living in senior housing. They don't want to count those buildings, but we're like, well, if the kids are living there, they should be counted in the mix. Other things that become tricky is what if a building is not uh at one hundred percent capacity? If you have three hundred and fifteen units, what if, what if there are fifty units that are not filled? Well, that's going to drive up the, the percentage of kids in the other building overall. So it gets a little bit complicated. I believe we should err on the side of caution. Um, I think that the, the developer takes obviously a more aggressive line. Uh, and so they're, they're going to be likely to underestimate the number of kids. I would say it's safer to overestimate the number of kids, to be on the safe side. A lot of people, just as a quick follow-up on that, will say, well, look, if you've got dropping enrollment, you've got enough room for the kids. Yes, that's true, but that's really not how you measure it. You know, you, you measure it on the cost to educate uh each, each student. Um, and there are many, many other factors that go into it. It would be a lot worse if this was happening and we didn't have any space at all, because then we'd be on the hook for building, uh building out more space, um, and we, that would factor into it, so anyway.
I just, just a comment, I just want to say thank you, Chris, for helping us to understand what's actually happening at the IDA, how it's impacting us in, in the school district, and thank you for being a watchdog for us. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, um, insurance committee, trustee Kerwin, nothing? Policy committee, I do not have anything today. Uh, security committee, trustee Thompson? Special education, Chris?
Yes, I, I have a report. That, the same day I had that IDA meeting, the, the special ed committee met. Uh, I'm going to just tick off some of the topics. These are follow-ups largely on the things that I've talked about before. Number one, service provision, you know, it's, it's a challenge particularly for related service providers for us to, to find and retain them, but we're doing better. Um, so there, we're short a little bit on speech. Um, we're, we're using some tele-help, which isn't ideal, but it's better than nothing. Um, but we're still trying to recruit and retain related service providers. It is harder now, so if a student enrolls in the district now and they need a lot of related services, speech, occupational, physical therapy, it's harder to, to place those services because we're, we're maxed out, but they're, they're doing the best they can, I think they really are. The Medicaid consent uh for, for prescriptions, we talked about the importance of that. That can, we have the ability to get some offsetting revenue through Medicaid, but it, it requires a waiver and, and you need a prescription from a provider. The good news is we have a nurse practitioner who's able to do the scripts for us now, so that will help bring that in. The compliance mon- monitoring, that's been slow, we're still awaiting feedback as we were last time. Training, there was a training on writing quality IP's done with BOS's. Um, we're trying to cycle through all of our special ed teachers on that. Tonight, probably, it's probably over by now, at six PM. It started with a, a web, uh webinar or whatever on New York State Alternative Assessments. Um, we're looking to uh do some training around toilet training. Uh, probably later, probably next month at this point, since it's Thanksgiving's coming up. Uh, there are a lot of TAs getting professional development in, for all of them is, is difficult, but they're working hard to do that. Um, preschool, special education, I've reported in the past that the number of evaluations has gone up. This is sort of that COVID bump that we're seeing, so there's more kids getting evaluated. The yield on those evaluations is, is higher. So for example, if you evaluate a hundred kids, more of them are qualifying than they were, than were in the past. This has potential ramifications for kindergarten enrollment next year. We will in January start reporting, trying to pin down what exactly it will mean in terms of our needs, in terms of classroom staffing and stuff like that. But it, it will ha- have an impact and of course, there'll be a financial cost with that as well. Let's see, um, so we discussed, this is a tricky problem. Every year, there are a few kids that are, are very high-cost students. They have a, a variety of complex learning and sometimes physical needs. And that it's very difficult for us to meet those accommodations in district, and so they go out to, to schools and they're very, very costly. That can be difficult to plan, um, and sometimes we get caught a little flat-footed. So for example, if a kid with very, very high needs moved in tomorrow into the district, we'd be responsible for educating that child. And if it costs a lot, we didn't budget for it, we still have to pay for it. Um, so that's just something to think about. It might be something to entertain when we budget going forward to, to sort of account for that, because it is predictable at this point. Transportation, I know that was touched on um by Mr. Formosa. We touched upon it in special ed as well. It's very costly, very hard to find drivers and very hard to cover all the routes. So that I'm sure is part of the planning as we go forward to optimize how, how we lay it out. Same thing with the extended school year, um, which is the summer program. It's a thirty-day summer program that many students with special needs are entitled to, to help prevent substantial regression. Um, it's just very, very hard to find staff to do that, so it's something that we're going to be talking about. I don't know whether anything, um, any policy changes will come out of that, but I know it's something that's on, on our mind. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. So technology, we have nothing, and we have wellness, trustee Mitchell?
Um, so, uh, we know that we have a food consultant, food services consultant, Bigley HMB, who's been uh involved with analyzing our district for issues uh in the services and how uh the district performs with the service provider, Aramark. Um, I requested reports uh back in September, um, especially also since the uh New York State Department of Health came in and they toured a couple of buildings at the end of September. So um, I requested the reports, I got them today. So I haven't had a chance, but I will review them uh and hopefully have some discussion. I am also inquiring as we speak, when the next securities and facilities meeting will ever happen? The last time we met was September twenty-fifth. Uh, so I really would like to see a cadence with that so that we can start to meet again. We have something to, to uh discuss on our committee reports for those two departments.
Any questions? That concludes the committee reports.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
May I interject?
Sure you can, of course you can.
Um, I just want to make sure that the public knows and that the uh other board members that are not aware that the policy meeting, a policy committee did meet in regards to pat downs and that upon the policy committee's direction, uh, amended the code of conduct regarding searches for which the policy committee now has, we'll review, we'll come back to the trustees, and then that will be presented to the public. So although we don't have a formal report, we are working on what we've been tasked to do. And I want to thank the policy committee members for their input, because that turned a half a page of reflection in the code of conduct to four pages, which I think is very much in- inclusive and thorough.
How does that impact whether the pat downs are continuing in the district? Because um, if I'm not mistaken, I know for a fact, we uh all voted that that would not continue and that was at the last board meeting two weeks ago. So um, have we ceased to desist on all pat downs until this policy is finalized?
Correct.
Thank you.
That was on, thank you, thank you, Mr. Russell. Yeah, that was on my old comm- old business report. So I'm just going to go over a few things for old business. Um, old business from Thursday, November seventh. We had a lot of questions about the potential reorganization of the schools. A revised building configuration proposal will be discussed for a comprised and cost-effective model at the town hall meeting Tuesday, November twenty-sixth on Zoom at six PM. Please check your emails and the district website for login information. We have also added community members to subcommittees. Uh, another question was, why are there no after-school programs for high schools? The attendance for after-school at high school levels were very low and no cost-effective, and not cost-effective for the district. Based on the twenty-three, twenty-four, um, what is this? After-school program, the Saturday reports, Malvern High School academic power hour was only at eleven percent. Denzel Washington after-school power hour was only at fourteen percent. Mount Vernon Steam Academy power hour was seven percent. Rebecca Turner power hour fall was ten percent and Rebecca Turner academic power hour for the spring was thirteen percent. And of course, we are, we're doing, we're using the code of conduct for the pat downs, just to make that. And that ends the old business, so we can go right on to the resolutions.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Uh, based on the fact that Denzel Washington's um report card night is the same night as the town hall, are we considering rescheduling the town hall?
It could be considered.
Okay, are we set? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to our resolutions. Are we ready? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I can't address that right now. We appreciate you coming. Well, we'll talk to you, can we just get through? You, you asked questions at the. You, you asked questions at the town hall, is that correct? That was part of the town hall that you asked? Okay, Rita, the district clerk is going to reach out to you, okay? The district clerk is going to reach out to you, okay? Okay, let's go on with our, um, I'm sorry, right now, we, we're going to... I apologize for your feelings. We're going to move on to our resolutions. Can I have a motion for 5.1 Human Resources, 115A, certified? Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.2 Human Resources, 115B, classified? Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Is the head coach positioned on any of these resolutions?
No.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.3 Request for a Leave of Absent? Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. The, um, documents, I just want to make sure they were properly signed and vetted. Were they?
Yeah, they were uploaded. We sent a text. Everything was...
When they were uploaded, I did not see the proper signatures from the HR representative indicating that they were approved? Was it done after the fact, after they were submitted or uploaded?
They were uploaded this afternoon, yes. And then a text was sent out that everything was uploaded.
So they...
Late this afternoon.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.1 Authorization to Hire Staff for the Mount Vernon Special Olympics Pioneer Games for 2024, 2025?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.2 Authorization for the Saturday Regions Review Program?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.3 Authorization to Hire Additional Staff for After-School Programs for K-8 Students for 2024, 2025 School Year? Motion. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.4 Authorization to Hire Additional Staff for the Smart Scholars Program for the 2024, 2025 School Year? Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.5 Authorization to Conduct After-School Club at Mount Vernon Steam Academy?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. Sorry, how is this mock trial team being funded? It says no cost to the district, but is there a funding source at all?
No, um, the teacher is volunteering their time.
Will there be any transportation costs? Will there be any competitions? Will there be any stipend in the past, any anticipated costs in the future?
Well, we don't know of that at the moment because, you know, they're just practicing their plan. If they need transportation, they'll fundraise.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.1 Approval of Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 9, dated November 20th, 2024? Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1 Authorization to Accept a Donation of $2,000 for Grimes School?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1 To Enter Executive Session For the Purpose of Discussing Pendant Litigation, The Financial History of Particular Person or Corporation, Or Matters Leading to the Appointment, Employment, Demotion, Discipline, Suspension, Dismissal, Or Removal of Particular Person or Corporation, And to Receive Legal Advice on a Pendant Matter?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. How long do you think we'll be there? We may have to come back and vote. There's a couple of resolutions that need to be discussed. A couple of resolutions that need to be discussed. No? Okay, we, we, we won't be back. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Don.